Yeah, thanks a lot. Yeah. This is a little yard.
Anything I'd like to call and let go of school board meeting, February 11th, 2019, if you could join me for the pledge holy notes. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm glad you're bringing me a cookie. Jamie?
Present.
Kevin?
Here.
John?
Present.
Jason?
Here.
Lisa?
Present.
Donna?
Here.
Thank you, Alicia. Announcements? There's no announcements at this time? Is that true?
It is true. Thank you. Although I can announce that the two young ladies in front of me are both celebrating their ninth birthday.
Aww.
Happy birthday.
And a little known fact is that they both were born at the same hospital. And years later, they're now friends.
Well, I think we should sing some happy birthday to them, don't you? All right, are we ready? On a one, on a two, on a three.
Ella and Eva.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Ella and Eva. Happy birthday to you.
And many more. Aren't you lucky that you get to come to a barbie? But you don't have to stay, you want to? Happy birthday, girl. All right. Time to put an announcement. The next school board meeting, the next regular school board meeting will be on Monday, March 11th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the GSL High School Community Room 443444. Acknowledgements. School Board Recognition Week, February 18th through the 22nd, 2019. I have certificates for you guys once again. For some of you, you're collecting them. But on behalf of the GSL School District, we do want to say thank you to our Board of Education for your service, for your work. Minnesota School Board Association recognizes that all school board members with their recognition week from February 18th to the 22nd. We're going to recognize you this week because of our board meeting, and I just want to say thank you for all of your work and your leadership for our school and our students. Congratulations. There you go. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you. They're extinctions. Please put this on your fridge. Congratulations. Public input relating to the agenda. Seeing a little public out there. No public, but we do have an agenda. Report and presentations not scheduled for this evening. Administrator and committee reports. Business manager report. Michelle?
Yep, just a couple of things. As you know, legislators have now started meeting. Not a lot of activity yet. They've been busy hearing a lot of bills from their committees and that type of thing. The governor's budget is coming out next week, the 19th, and then the budget forecast comes out the 29th. So once those two dates, those are kind of critical. Once they kind of know what their budget forecast is, then you'll start seeing a lot more activity at the Capitol regarding bills and appropriations. So we'll continue to watch what happens there. There's a couple of bills that we want to watch closely as it affects school funding. So we'll keep you updated and just so you pay attention to what's going on out there. Parking lot bids, as you know, have been published. They've gone out to contractors that are interested in bidding. Those bids are due the 26th. That's the date that we'll open bids, so we'll see how those come out. And then after that, we'll review, and then we'll start the abatement bond process. And I sent you those timelines, so just to review those once again. Once the bids come in, we'll determine, you know, at the large board meeting, that dollar amount that we want to look at for the abatement bond. The board then will adopt the resolution calling for the public hearing regarding the tax abatement hearing. And then we send that to the publication. We'll have the abatement hearing at the April board meeting prior to the regular board meeting. Ellis comes out and conducts all of that, so we don't have to worry about that. And then we look at calls on selling the bonds at June 6th. So I'll keep you updated as we go along, but that's just kind of where we're at on the parking lot and the abatement bond process. Also, the bids were sent out regarding the health insurance, the getting bids, and so those aren't due till March. So we've got a couple months to wait and see if any of those come in. Any questions?
Principal reports. Mr. Butler?
Thank you, and good evening. You can see on the top here the dates of our leadership team meetings. Our instructional leadership team, which is a combined team for both of our elementary sites, will meet on February 19th. And we'll continue to look, that we began with the root cause related to our achievement gap between English learners and non-English learners, as we receive that issue from MDE on that. If you look down toward positive behavior interventions and supports, I know that was one of the acronyms that came up last month. You can see when Lincoln's All-School Meeting is scheduled, Lakeside is to be determined in May. But something that the kids and I are really excited about, our next learning adventure for Lincoln will be Subway and Swimming. And we'll use our pool here at the high school, bring the kids to Subway for lunch. Maybe have lunch brought in, we're still working on that. And that'll be in the first week, week of March. And our pro teams will work together and meet later in February, and then in March to plan those end-of-year all-school meetings and learning adventures. If you look at our curriculum and assessment, teachers had a great opportunity on the 24th and 25th of January. Our rep from McMillan McGraw-Hill, Don Consimius, was on-site at both buildings and did some literacy coaching, walkthroughs, time with teens. So very valuable as we implement our new reading curriculum this year at K through six. Math committee met a little bit after school today, looking at different needs, at grade levels K through six, perhaps what holes we're seeing and what and how we're teaching. And I think most importantly, we asked each grade level, you know, what do you most want kids to have when they come into your classroom at the next grade? So that will be the basis for our work in March at our next meeting. Little bit under state and federal programs, Minnesota Reading Corps, applications have been submitted. And then under special education, earlier in the year, we talked a little bit about STAR autism. We did have more coaching from somebody at the cooperative, Jennifer Shorps, spent the day with our special education staff last week. And I believe that must have been Wednesday that they came through. And then the big focus there was preparing, as we transition a small group of children from early childhood special education to kindergarten, and being able to best meet their needs. If you look on the back, all of those activities, the school community partnership, a lot going on. This is an especially busy month because it's Winter Fest. I love to read, and I do want to stress and acknowledge our teaching staff, because everything you see there, it would not happen without their extra effort. So thank you to all of them. What questions do you have? Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. I'm Mr. Spas. Good evening. We've started right away under school improvement. I've talked about this for a while, but we're pretty excited about junior high and high school level. On March 4th, we're here next year in service day, we have Solution Tree coming up to talk about RTI. You know, this will be for our entire staff, but more specifically geared towards our junior high for next year, implementing tier-one interventions. Our PBIS program is still going. We have our last day of training in Kato coming up in March. And then we'll be moving forward and sustaining on our voluntary medical silver link, training as needed. Our solution focus team still meets twice a month. This assists with our child find process and the special education process. It also identifies interventions to maybe assist some students in the agenda classroom before it gets to a special end referral. Our high school and junior high leadership teams both meet monthly. Our 2019-2020 registration process was supposed to have taken place last week, and with some of the weather that we have, we did not get to it. And we are going to try and get this this week. However, our counselor is up a stretch and could potentially be mono. So we will see how to get these registration processes taken care of for our students for next year. Battery power hours went very well. We implemented the Google spreadsheet that I spoke to before, kind of holding kids accountable. And within the first week or two, we've had a number of students who are now reporting related to the 2001, would be the issues that we deal with just on an individual basis now. Grade level meetings, we still meet with those during our Friday PLC times. This helps with our student assistance team, helps our social focus teams, and it also helps recognize our student spotlight, the more minutes for our PBIS program, and our connection maps, which is the next portion I'll move into. I've spoken each month that we've come here about the importance that I thought of our high school connection maps. So today I add some data on there for you. And as you can see, the 12th, 11th, 10th grade level, 100% of our students have a significant connection with at least one staff member. And our ninth grade is at 97%, as we actually when I took this. I also spoke in August when I came in and gave my first board report that moving forward, I'd like to see the connection maps move to junior high. And I think next year, this will be a 712 connection map as opposed to a 912. Our Hispanic outreach program is still working. We were supposed to have met last week again to discuss the meeting that we're going to be getting together at the end of February. I'm guessing that we're going to be meeting this week, had the amount of weather does. Ola's program, anti-goubling program, we still hold once a month, are in a rap at the junior high and senior high level. And then at the bottom, there's one in all that I'll leave for you guys to read regarding our one act play team. But the one that is not in there, I just found out as I was walking down from the office here. We have a ninth grade student, Alida Ross Camp, who last year had the short story unit. At the junior high, submitted a short story, and she just received word today that it will be published. So congratulations, sir. Any questions?
Thank you. Thanks, man. Superintendent Rickware?
Thank you very much. Just a couple of things. Now, there, most of the stuff that I have in front of you has either been talked about by part of the members of the cabinet team, and then also many of the items on the agenda are things that are in my report, so I can just say until those agenda items, because as you are well aware, we've been dealing with lots of weather and dealing with all the different implications that deal with that, not only from just school perspective, but all the other things that come along with that. And so we're really trying and working hard, and we'll have a good discussion on where we go with that. I just want to point out also that Chanda Landis, who is our senior high art teacher, she's got a youth art month information here. During the month of March, their kids are going to be submitting lots of their works for different types of things. And what we do is we'll ask her to come on April to present how our kids have done, because at that time, they'll know during the March meeting, they won't quite know all the different results that they may have. But there's some information for you for youth art month. But we recognize youth art month in March, but we'll recognize it in April.
Okay, thank you. Committee reports? Are there any committee reports?
We got a... There aren't none? All right. On the 16th of January, we had a health and safety committee report. Just a few things there. There was a lot of walk-through and a list of things that Brady has been working on with each room and just things that tidy up with some extension cords and things like that. At that time, we used 8,000 pounds of salt. So I think we got a little bit of something. And but, you know, thanks to the salt, I guess there was at that time anyway, very few incidents of slips and falls, so hopefully that still continues. But that's all I got on that.
Okay, thank you. Any other committee reports? John and I attended a community education advisory council on January 23rd. There continues to be an official shortage with regard to all sports, more or less. And so once again, we are continuing to look at ways of attracting individuals that will referee umpire and so forth for the various sports. There's a coaching shortage as well. So once again, we look at ways of recognizing those referees, umpires, coaches that we currently have, continuing to keep them involved, and once again, thank them every opportunity that we get. But we continue to reach out and look at ways of attracting additional individuals for those sports and for those activities, because the need is obviously there. The driver discount program, we will no longer be having that AARP 55 program being offered. However, in place of that is something equivalent, it's through the St. Cloud area, St. Cloud program, and it's a state-focused curriculum. And as of January, there was a class signed up through community out of about 24 people. So it's the same type of class that you take or curriculum that you would take to get the discount of insurance for automobile, and that would be 55 and older. So very applicable, very equivalent. And State Farm does their home classes for discounts. And so that was made mentioned of at that meeting as well. Anything that I'm missing, John, or anything that you can figure along? Okay. Thank you. Any other committee reports? All right. Approve the agenda action item. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Kevin and a second by Jason to approve the agenda. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Approve the consent agenda action item enclosure number one. Please note that there is an addendum to the consent agenda. Is there a motion? So move. And is there a second? I have a motion by Kevin and a second by Alicia to approve the consent agenda, but the agenda was noted. Any discussion, question, or comment? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Old business, we have no old business at this time. New business, approve revision to the 2019-2020 calendar action item enclosure number two. During the meet confer meeting on February 6th, 2019, teacher representatives from the high school have asked to have their conference date changed on the 2019-2020 calendar from January 9th to January 16th. Superintendent Sanju recommends approval of this change. Is there a motion?
So...
Is there a second?
No second.
I have a motion by John and a second by Donna to change the high school conference date on the 2019-2020 school calendar stated above. Questions, comments, or discussion?
I'm not sure why it wasn't listed there at first, but it just did. They just want to have it be by the corresponding date that it's set right now. These are a little more time to try to add at conference.
Anything else? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item D, adopt 2020-2021 calendar action item enclosure number three. During the meet confer meeting, the 2020-2021 calendar was prepared. It is meet confers recommendation that the board adopt the 2020-2021 school calendar. Highlights include school to start on Tuesday, September 8th, winter break from Wednesday, December 23rd through Friday, January 1st, 2021, spring break Friday, April 2nd through Monday, April 5th. Just a note that Easter is on April 4th. The last day of students, of school for students is Wednesday, June 2nd, and the last day for staff would be Thursday, June 3rd. Graduation is Friday, June 4th, 2021. Superintendent Sanju recommends approval of the 2020-2021 school calendar as proposed. Is there a motion?
I have a motion.
And is there a second? I have a motion by Jason and a second by Alicia to adopt the 2020-2021 school calendar. Any questions, comments, or discussion?
I'll just mention one thing. I would like you to approve the calendar so we can get it set. There's a very high probability that we'll be bringing this calendar back. There's a House file, I believe it's House File 531, that's going to allow school districts to start before Labor Day in the years of 2021 and the 21-22 school year, because it's a late Labor Day start. They did this five years ago, whenever it was the last cycle, and I'm assuming that they'll probably allow school districts to do that again. So just a point of note and reference, and once that gets completed in the legislature or at the Capitol, we can have those conversations on what would happen to this calendar. Does that sound okay? I think that it's a good thing to take advantage of it, so we're going to want to do that, but at least we can kind of get things started a little bit. You know, one of the biggest things that families like to know is what is that graduation date? And this is the graduation date that we've been following for the last excellent years. So the calendar, if you move it, it goes into that Friday of Memorial Day weekend, which we stayed off of. So you can just keep it the same, and then we can do some other things in the middle of the calendar to help adjust if we start from. We could have snow days. You could have snow days. There you go.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item C, move April school board meeting action item. Superintendent Sanju is requesting to move that April school board meeting from April 8th to April 15th. Is there a motion?
I'll make that one.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Jason and a second by Kevin to move the April school board meeting to April 15th. Questions, comments, or discussion?
Anybody know is there any counter answers that night? Or one piece of print answer, but I haven't had with it.
The only comment I have is that I won't, I will be probably late to that meeting because I have to work that night till typically almost 8 o'clock. So I would be late. I have to spend my schedule a month ahead of time, so it's not enough notice to change that. It's over a month. So I just, I, every other Monday, I have to work the morning, and then the opposite one has, it has to be the evening to find some way to cover it would work. So...
I don't see any concerts at this point. We got soft orders of crowd traction.
I can check.
Any other questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item D, digital day discussion possible action item. Superintendent Chris Andrew will provide information regarding the possibility of adding an additional digital day if needed for the 2019-2020 school calendar.
What I want to do is to have a quick discussion about some changes of where things are at. What I tried to do is do a quick little outline of all of these. Do you guys want one of these over there? You got it? Okay. So basically, obviously, you know that we've had some cancellations and some things. And so as a cabinet, we discussed, I also solicited some data from, you know, the staff members, and in order to change things up a little bit, we need you guys to approve some changes. If we do nothing, the days are going to be added to the end of the calendar. And, you know, as we discussed about, you know, just this weather that we've been having and having it be somewhat unique, we're looking at a few things that we think would be better for our students. And obviously, when you make some changes in calendars, we know some of the ramifications that come about with that. But I tried to outline just a little bit of where we're at, and then star the areas that I would like to have the discussion. And please know, I'm okay with whatever we decide, because we're going to make it work, but we're just trying to have a conversation and as a cabinet to talk a little bit about, you know, how can we continue to have, you know, the days, also have a plan for, if there are some more days, we're in the middle of April, or sorry, we're in the middle of February, and there's potentially some more weather and those types of things, and you just never know what's going to happen. So January 28th was digital day, different day, that's set. We've had that implemented from a contractual standpoint, and that's one. 29th was the same thing. January 30th, we missed that day as well. Per calendar, nothing needs to get set from a board standpoint, we're making that up on May 30th. That's set, installed. We also then last week had two more days we missed school, February 7th and February 8th. If we do nothing, those days get added to May 31st, and then get added then to June 3rd as instructional days, and then our last day will be June 4th. We are asking to propose to make those days up on April 18th and April 22nd. And the reason for that is, is to replace instructional days with instructional days in the middle of the calendar or in the middle of the school year. We feel that those days will be a lot more beneficial from an academic standpoint than putting them at the end of the year. Okay? With that said, that gets us sort of caught up in terms of where we would be at. In the event, so that's one area, and I don't really want to go through the emotion of the whole thing, but, and I get the whole fact of Easter. We talked about it, but when I went and surveyed the staff, you know, many staff members said that those would be acceptable days. Not all, not all everybody said that, but at the same time, you know, again, we're dealing with a situation that's pretty unique. The next thing that I would like to talk about and ask is the fact that because of the days that we missed, and it's a calendar change, to move our second try back one week. And that will take the March 4th date and move that to March 11th, and that would be a workshop day. We would like to keep the March 4th, our March 11th workshop day as a workshop day, because number one, it's the end of a try, and there is marking periods and things like that. And then it's also have, we have some professional development opportunities that we have scheduled in. The reason why we're moving that back is because we've missed five days, and those second try classes are going to be short, those five classes. And so that's why we've done that. And we've done this, what was it, three years ago, when we had that, four years ago, I think, of when we had several days missed, that we did adjust the try to kind of help balance out those numbers of days. And then the last thing that would happen is to kind of develop a plan, and this would give us a little room of three more days, if we would happen to have three more days. And I would ask for two of those days to be what they would call digital different days again, so that we could implement those. And then the third one, if that would be missed, is that we put that one on the calendar and would actually be at the start of the workshop day in the 2019-2020 school year. And I know you're going to have probably some questions along those lines, but we felt that that workshop day would be really beneficial to be able to do some of the things that we've talked about that we want to do from a professional development standpoint, and be able to have, again, like I said, a plan in place. Those three days, you don't know. We have school every single day the rest of the year, you know, we're set, but at least we have a plan, we can really outline it to families and parents about what we're going to do. That's the summary. That's the summary. I don't know if you have any questions, I don't know if you have any concerns. I, I'm okay with anything, you know, when I solicited some data on this, I got it from everywhere, you know, you got information coming from everywhere. Yeah, and it's not gonna be ideal, but unfortunately, we've had, you know, five days of missed school with a number of late starts as well, and you know, with, with that said, um, it, it calls for us to, to put in front of view a change in the calendar, thus a change in the calendar needs to be approved by the board. How'd you? Well, I can't. But you could, you could, I mean, as simply as, and we might have a discussion, but you could say as simply as, you know, we can, you know, 'cause I outlined the proposal, you know, if you wanna accept that or modify it, you could just modify that. You could make that motion as presented in the document. And I know it's a little complicated with everything.
Since some of this is calendar, um, discussion or calendar changes that typically go through meet and confer, um, is there a local two eighty-four representative on the meet and confer committee?
There is. And, and with that said, you know, if you do implement the, the, the two digital days, I've been in discussion with the, with the union, talking about how we can make sure that they get those days as a work day. Where those fall is something that we're gonna have to work out, but we've worked together to say, well, we'll figure that out as we go, 'cause you just, again, you don't know when they're gonna fall. Did I answer that question? But we know that they have that, you know, that contractual time period is, is something that they do, they have been held up to, and, and we know that, and we recognize that, and we work with that.
I guess this call maybe goes to Mr. Fox or to Mr. Butler. Do we have any data showing digital days, I know I'm new to the board here, um, but, um, the data, kids participating, um, staff participating, um, you know, with this, you know, we're adding two more now, um, and I'd like to have a little bit of background before I can make a decision on the one or the other, uh, how, how it actually worked, um, what was the student participation versus, you know, stuff like that?
Yeah, you know, all, all certified staff participated to varying degrees, and, you know, it, it, the bulk fell on our, you know, our thirty-four classroom teachers. They had the most student contact, and I had them report data, um, like number of students fully participated, partially did not participate. So we had eighty percent full participation, um, ranged from a hundred at, uh, at kindergarten, and then it kind of went, went down as you progress through the grade levels. All of the specialists participated, um, you had, you know, you had a handful of kids in, with some of the specialties, participating, reaching out, for example, to a FIAE teacher, um, but strong numbers actually participating with their core general ed classroom teacher.
Well, at high school?
So same thing that Mr. Butler said, uh, we had all of our certified staff took part in it. We even had counselors submit data to me of individuals that they reached out to that they may have normally connected with on those days. Um, the way that I did it, I sent out an approval form and just had every staff member input their data. So how many students reached out to you, how many students did you reach out to them? You know, the numbers at the high school level, pending on, on subject area, range of percentage of taking place, but we were about the seventy percent to ninety percent of engaged, um, for students, which for the first time through, and some students, not necessarily knowing what digital day was, different day, I thought the numbers were very good. The, the informal data, I guess, gathered in just talking in the hallway with the kids, they really appreciated it. Um, obviously, you're gonna have some outliers of the kids saying, I didn't, you know, I don't have access at home, and, and there's not a way around that. However, students helped fellow students out, um, with cell phones and internet access these days. It was a very high percentage of students that took, took part in it, so. I mean, I, I can share with you, I'm looking at it right now, the data that I received. Um, I can certainly share with you guys if you would like to look at that more in depth, but it, it was a very high level engagement at junior high and high school level.
Uh, can you elaborate, can you elaborate a little bit as far as what the participation was? I mean, did they just check in and say, you know, I, I got the information, or did, were they asking questions? Were they turning something in, you know, emailing something in? 'Cause I guess my question, my, the biggest concern that I have is if digital day happens, are they actually doing work that consists of being, participating in school? Or are they spending ten minutes just kind, you know, connecting with the teacher and saying, yeah, I did it, or I got it, and that's it? You know what I mean?
Donna, are you asking elementary and high school?
Both, both, 'cause I, I, I guess I think for the elementary, for the, you know, for the high school kids, they're a little more responsible and they're gonna do it, but for elementary kids, I think because it's maybe a little bit more complicated for them, they might not be able to do it or want to do it, and then with not being able to have a parent at home, 'cause maybe they're at daycare or at grandma's, you know, because of digital day, because of snow day, are they actually getting a parent or an adult to help them get, you know, do it?
Certainly, a lot, a lot of, a lot of parents support, and I think that kindergarten participation, the full participation for all, you know, one hundred twenty-five some kids, um, speaks to that. But, um, so the way it looks at elementary, every, every grade level and every specialist sent something home in purple folders. Keep this for our digital day, you know, it's coming, it took four years, but it's coming. And that, for that full participation, you know, it was more, it was more than, than a check-in. Um, you know, read these sightlers and read for twenty minutes, practice your math facts. And then part of it did involve, you know, um, weather permitting, you know, it was, it was cold that week, but, you know, on the snow days, for example, you could have the kids go outside. Um, so it involved more than a check-in, in most cases, certainly not in all. It involved a lot of check-ins, like when you're talking about, um, school counselors, FIAE, hey, Mr. Metcalf, I just did this. STEM, Mrs. Pierce, I, I worked on this. So certainly with, with our thirty-four classroom teachers, heavy involvement with, with communication, a lot of it after checking the work, you know, showing their responsibility. Does that, does that at least begin to answer your question?
No, that's what I wanted to know, 'cause I wanted to know if they were, I mean, if they were just checking in and say, yeah, I got the information, or I, I did it, and, um, not really showing proof that they did it, or, or having something to turn in, that's kinda what I wanted to know, I guess.
Yeah, there were, all, in all cases, there was something to turn in.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
I was able to observe it at home with my three kids that day, or those two days, and I felt it was a nice success, and, uh, we're being brand new. My celebrator worked on stuff for hours, um, with his assignments that he had. My second grader, fifth grader also worked on their stuff, and used their folders and did their projects, and worked on STEM project and that, that type of stuff, so. Um, I guess what I would ask of the teachers is, as, as we meet about this and talk about it, can, you know, I would think there'd be ways to maybe better learn from this experience now, and as we go forward with it, and whether keeps kicking our butt here, um, you know, we do end up approving two more days and end up using them, hopefully, we can make them even better, so. Please use the data, use the information, have everybody talk about it and, and maybe make it even better, so, thank you.
I'll kind of piggyback on what Jason said, I have two kids, I went through it at home, so I did see, um, both of my kids, I think maybe worked a little harder at home than they do in school all day. But, um, one of the things would be just some little clarification points for teachers. Um, I know, like, you know, when, one of the questions my son had was, well, when is, when does it do? Like, is it, do I need to have click turn in during my time of day that I would've had it? Do I need to, does it need to be in by the end of the day? Oh, I turned it in, but I see a mistake, can I undo it, or will it be late? So that was just some of the questions that came up in, in my house, so just little things. I think, as Jason said, how can we improve, how can we make things better? But overall, um, I have to say it was, from what, the feedback that I heard from some of the people in the community and just things that I observed with my own kids, I think it went very well.
Mr. Fox, did you have some additional information from the junior high school?
To answer this question. You know, we're, we're pretty much the same as what Bill had said, um, students needed to submit, but I would agree with what Alicia said, um, one of the comments I'm looking at right here is there, there was a class of twenty-eight students, and three had submitted it. Well, it was, the students were unsure, do I submit it online, do I bring it into school and submit it? So, you know, I think expectations need to be more clear would be one of the ways to improve upon this. And then for myself, you know, one of the learning things that I look at right now and go, oh, that's pretty self-limited, or I can't believe I'm thinking that, but as, as this was posted, you know, all these students need access to Google, um, classroom accounts. And we, we have a sheet of that, the staff has access to, all Google codes to get into every classroom there is. Well, it's not posted on the internet, so these kids were home on digital days, and it actually probably led to more students reaching out to staff, which was a good thing at that point, because they were saying, hey, what was the Google classroom code, so that they could get in and access it. But for myself, one of the main learning things is I need to get those Google codes uploaded to the website. So when they have a digital day, they have access to all of the classes they may have had. But yeah, there's certainly tweaking that needs to happen, and I'm not gonna sit here and say it was a success, and, and where we are is great, and I'm good with this, but for the first time out of the gate, I think we're off to a great start, and we made some minor adjustments based off of the, the comments that we've had, what we've talked about here, and, and I do see this becoming a successful use of time moving forward to kind of avoid, um, the issue that we're in right now, talking about making up days and where we do that at, so.
I guess one, one question or concern that I have is just the, the students that don't have access, and that's something that we've talked about before as a board, as we were developing this, and, um, now that we've had the opportunity to take it for a test bid and, and see what's working successfully, and then like Jason and Alicia said, to make tweaks to make it better, I wonder if a possible compromise in what was presented here would be instead of two digital days, adding one digital day and continue to, um, research on how to make it better. But I guess that's just a concern that I have, is that equal access for all students. When they're here at school, obviously, they've got equal access, they've got equal access to their teachers, they've got even access to the materials and so forth that they need. If they're at daycare, if they're at home, and they don't have internet access or, um, devices, it, it puts them at a disadvantage, and I guess that that's a voice and a concern that, that needs to be shared for those families and for those students, so, thank you.
Just to adjust that a little bit, um, that's why we only did two. I mean, seriously, that's why we said two for each year, and, and go from it. Now we're, you know, just because of the uniqueness of this year is why we're asking for two more, but it's a great point, and, and, you know, I think it will always be one of those concerns, and I think our teachers do do a very good job of catching those kids up when they get here afterwards, um, but yeah, I, you know, it's that balancing act of what is right and that kind of stuff, because not every kid has access, and we know that, but, um...
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Is this something that needs action this evening, or is it something that?
I think so, 'cause it allows, you know, us to get the word out, 'cause, you know, there are people, can you have President's Day? And I, if you guys said to me, have school at President's Day, we could have school at President's Day. I'm not saying that, just because I don't know if that's what my recommendation would be, but there's validity behind that. They're saying, you know, we got a lot of information. We went through this to kinda say, here's a, if you're gonna ask me for a recommendation on what to do, this is what I'm putting in front of you, 'cause I think it balances things as, as best as possible. There's lots of options out there, I mean, people talked about what do you do on the March fourth date, or if we go to the March eleventh date, but what about, um, you know, there was one suggestion that said, well, use that March eleventh day as two, use it as a digital day, use it as a staff development day. You know, um, and again, trying to just balance all of that, that, you know, I came up with this, and, you know, both there's a right con or right answer, but I, I just think that this is trying to get the needs of our students. And, uh, and trying to balance, you know, the unfortunate winter that we're dealing with with schools. Lots of schools are having different creative, I had discussions with them, they are doing things that are ranging from, you know, anything and everything above, and I think you just gotta do what you think is what's best for your school district.
And we want to live here, but considering there's no, for instructional day, digital day's not a replacement, so that would definitely correct, we would rather have instructional day rather than a digital day, 'cause I, um, I have a seven-eight-three daughter who works for this event, um, for that class, it would be very difficult, you know, to replace a instructional day with a digital day. Granted, we're not looking at, we're just looking for this school year, or pulling a couple of places to take care of the needs that we have in case we do have a couple of other events, um, to make sure that, um, we have that, um, you know, we have, when we come to school, we have seven hours or six hours of instruction. You know, my teachers, you know, uh, what would you say, how long, I mean, Alicia, you said, you think we're five hours or four hours? I mean, I don't know that, but, um, you know, I just, we're trying to process this all. Um, you know, we went outside, okay, was that, they walked outside, they walked back, you know, if it was so cold out, um, you know, stuff like that, um, just trying to process this. That's the only, um, you know, I think digital day went well from everything that I've heard and have is, um, talking with staff, talking to a lot of staff members, um, I just also kind of come to the realization that having an instructional day still is the best way to go, you know, if we live in a perfect world. That's all I'm saying.
I guess in the end, it's digital day or?
You lose funding.
No, you, you, no, you lose funding before you put them into June.
So I guess with what Chris just said, if we do add at the end of June, what, I mean, do we? Or beginning of June, sorry, yeah, beginning of June, do we feel that those days are more beneficial to our students versus a different, a digital different day? You know, that's where the balance, are we going to be, is there going to be more productivity out of our students that way versus the beginning of June? You know, I, I know in my own house, kind of, that Memorial Day weekend symbolizes the end of the school year, you know, that I think the kids sometimes lose interest, they're kind of ready to check out, they know those last few days, you know, are, are here. We're, you know, I guess where do we find that balance?
That's kind of what we talked about at the meet and confer too, that also too, that, I mean, you're talking about missing how many days now, you know, in second, in second trimester, and then you go and add days to the third trimester. That's not benefiting second trimester, that's benefiting third trimester, 'cause then, like you said, by the time June comes, kids are kind of checked out by then, and they're not really, you know, getting a lot of instruction anyhow. So, I mean, we're, I don't know any, I mean, I don't have kids in school anymore, and we didn't- we didn't have digital day back then when they were in school. But I think it did hurt them a little bit when they had snow days, and then they had to try and catch up, you know? So even, I think, a little bit of instruction, whether it's, you know, via the computer, I think helps keep, you know, keep them up a little bit and keep them moving, plus it also, you know, kind of keeps them, instead of sitting around all day doing nothing, you know, it kind of keeps them mindful that we still need to learn. And, so I mean, I don't necessarily mind the digital day, I just wonder whether or not it helps the younger kids as much as the older kids. That's, that's the only thing that I'm concerned with, only because technology, even though my, my kids knew more about technology when they, you know, when they were little than I did, but still, I think some of the younger ones will probably struggle, struggle with it more than the older ones, and then like Jamie said too, you're always gonna have kids that don't have the access to it, and I just, I don't want them to feel that they're being left behind, or, you know, kind of penalized for it. That's, you know, and I, I mean, I'm sure that the teachers are not doing that, that's for sure, but I just don't want them to feel like they are, you know? So it's, it's, you know, do we do it or not do it? Like I said, I think even a little bit of instruction via the computer is better than nothing.
I would like to make a motion to, to accept the school schedule plan winter of 2019. The way it is written right now, with the implementation of the two more digital different days, hopefully you don't have to use them, we can use the data we have, so hopefully improve on them if we have to. Although tomorrow might be one real big one for us, hopefully not, but I, my, my motion would be to accept the school schedule plan winter of 2019, that we have in progress.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Jason and a second by Alicia to adopt for the 2019 plan as presented and written by Superintendent Sanju. Any other questions, discussion, comments?
On the bottom of the schedule plans, just please note that the two digital days go to digital days. We need to make a plan for local 284, our employees that have the opportunity to work these hours in this, so how would we handle that?
So, obviously, depending on when it happens, if it happens, we would then work with 284 to come up with a day where they would be granted that opportunity to come to work, and so they would still get that opportunity to work. Now, when that happens, it depends on when the day is there. So if it happens tomorrow, we could say that they could come into work and we could use like a March 4th or a March, this one, a March 11th day, to try to get it in as close as possible. If nothing else, you could then put it at the end of the year for them to come in and work at the end of this school year, to give them their opportunity to work that day.
Does that, does that need to be part of the motion?
No, because in the end, you're gonna probably work it out with individuals, because there's gonna be some scheduling conflicts, and, you know, I've talked with Pam or payroll person, I talked with Cheryl who's with 284, there may need to be some, you know, opportunities that some people will need to meet because of this or because of that reason, and we just need to be flexible with them. There's gonna be a bunch of them that choose just not to even come in to work, and they're just fine with giving up a day's opportunity to work. So, it, it's gotta be a little bit fluid, but in all that, we can chart that, we can keep records of that, we can make it work for them.
How does that affect, like, payrolls and, and stuff with, because, like, like ECFE for just, for example, even if we're two hours late, they don't have school at all. So they're being, they're even having more off, so how does that affect, like, their insurance? Because doesn't insurance come out of their paycheck? So if you have a lot smaller paycheck, or not one at all, then how does, how does, how do they pay that insurance?
They have to pay it. I mean, if they don't have enough hours, they have to, you know, bring insurance and then insurance. ECFE, because they have a different calendar, in the past, they're normally done, like the first week of May, and they allow the next three weeks as any makeup days that they needed during the year. So they get all their sessions in eventually, so like now they're maybe short, those three days or five days or whatever, but they'll make those all out of May, so that's how they set their calendar. For the support staff, secretaries are a little different, because a few of them have worked, going, we gotta have school, we gotta have your schedule. The, the rest of the support staff, the pair professionals, when we talked to Kevin this morning, the administration, they can come up with staff development things, that we're always kind of never finding the time to give the, the payrolls in for staff development. In the past, when this has happened, we have, we were saying probably at least half that choose not to work. You know, we offer that day for them to come in and work, and they choose not to. So we make the staff development available for, to make up for hours. We have some, I mean, they do have the option on a couple of those snow days, they can choose to take that as a personal day, we're not moving that pace, we have to do a bit of that for a couple of those days, so that helps their paycheck. We don't have a lot of support staff that take insurance, but it's effective as much.
By not having the plan for local 284 at this time, does it open us up to a possible grievance later on by local 284? You know, the, the plan would be to have the opportunity to work those hours missed, I understand that, but for us to adopt this first, and then to go back and create a plan for the 284, for the employees, I'm just kind of wondering if that's kind of putting the cart before the horse, and if we shouldn't have a plan for local 284, for the employees first, and then maybe that would mean that this proposal goes through Meet and Confer, where they have a representative? Just kind of wondering about that.
I don't believe it does. Thank you, bye.
Would you dare to agree with the fair?
Yep.
Well, it's also contract for...
Yeah, it's already set in contract, they get to work these days.
And we can't do a plan until we know if the day happens and when it happens. Like, if we have a day now, then we'd offer them that March 11th, that's definitely the day, to come in that day if we have some additional training.
And then if they're, that's, that's planted, and if there's an employee that can't make it on that day because of whatever reason, I'd work with that person on an individual basis to say, would you like to work on that one? So they all have that from a contract standpoint, already set in place, and we're gonna give them that opportunity to work. I'm not sure what, what, what they're disagreeing.
And is the then shared with the 284 representative?
I'd like to talk to Cheryl.
Any other questions, comment, or discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item B, first reading of policy action item. Is recommendation of the policy committee to bring back the following policies for adoption at the next school board meeting. 407, employee right to know exposure hazardous substances. 408, subpoena of a school district employee. 409, employee publications, instructional materials, conventions and creations. 414, mandated reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse. 421, gifts to employees and school board members. 422, policies incorporated by reference. 423, employees' student relationships. 424, license status. 430, employee use of social media. 435, personnel policy providing for the occasional employment of non-exempt employees for supervision and management of extracurricular functions. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Kevin and a second by Donna to bring back the policies listed above for adoption at the next school board meeting. Questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item F, resolution to accept donations, action item. Is recommendation of Superintendent Sanju to adopt resolution to accept donations? Is there a motion?
I support.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Donna, a second by John, to accept the donations listed. Any questions, comments, or discussion?
Thank you, for donating.
Thank you. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Miscellaneous, item G, there is none at this time. Motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by John and a second by Donna to adjourn the meeting at 8 o'clock. Any questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Meeting adjourned.